The attendance was spectacular. I think ninety to ninety-four percent on average for all the schools. We did talk about the summer school program and everything. You know, about driver's ed and I think that's actually changed. So it was canceled, I think outside, right? So this is very outdated, so let's get that. We talked about special education teachers, professional support, and then I talked about mythology words for senior English. About, I'll do next a little bit about phase one opening for I C C sports, which again, I think is almost outdated, almost. And we talked about phase two coming relatively soon. And this will be known July meeting. And I believe that's everything. We didn't know. Anybody that was there in this zone down at the Zoom class? Zoom down at the zone? It was a good meeting. There was, you know, a lot of us spent, most of us spent. I think. Just some general updates on some of those. You had this much. And you won't miss July. Okay, that's it. What mostly want to add? And Melissa, you had the other half of the meeting.
Well, it was combined. And I think right now we're doing. Where I talked about the student hand up meeting. And don't you like me? And it was classes that the teachers took in with the summer. You know, some support staff. I think it had its own effect. Really, it was nice enough. Each principal was very, very proud of the way the graduates went and their response more smoothly than they anticipated. And the feedback was that the parents liked it better because they got to drive straight up to the podium and take a better picture of their child. So they were all going to keep doing it that way. But it was a very like a part each of these schools to accommodate five hundred kids coming to graduation. But it was a great meeting. And I think that really something.
Okay, thank you both. Any questions for them from Kate?
No, I didn't have any, sorry.
All right. Then we'll go to building and finance. And I'm extremely sure, back on no notice, Kate did a wonderful job of leading that meeting. And so it was, it was gonna be a coin flip between Dave and Kate, but Dave.
We each tried your best and Bob, but I lost.
Oh, Dave was very gentlemanly on Kate's end.
Well, thanks to Kate, I appreciate it. Great. So we had our meeting, June fifteenth, started at six P M. David Keating gave us a rundown of the major projects, equipment plans, kind of the long-term capital project plan, which we always do. Talked about the LED lighting project, which is progressing, the roof renovation progress is a little bit slow due to weather conditions. Security camera installations are moving right along. Removal of the current field turf and underground electric system started at SAG, full filter replacement at SAG, we spent them around, and I'm just waiting for I D V H to uphold installation. Talked about the solar project, Dave talked with the architects. Project design is gonna start maybe mid-July, ninety project, and then they're gonna go off on bids in September. We were contacted by Payless Hills regarding the A permanent easement, which will bring them on to fit the state community because it's going to help us with intersection improvements at one hundred and eleven in Roberts Road. So make it safer for people getting out of SAG and into SAG. We talked about the Sabrina Carson baseball turf bid results. Those are gonna be discussed later, I think. They've also shared about the cleaning and maintenance and what a great job A B M has done with all the extra cleaning and sanitizing, so that's always worth a here. Their contract is up, so I'm guessing we're gonna talk about that a little bit later. He also talked about us receiving our procurement funds. Those are approximately a hundred thousand dollars. That's the energy project where we shut down. Depending on how many times we're gonna do it or ask to do it, or have the possibility of doing it, we can get more or less money. So this past time we get a hundred thousand dollars. Of course, Mr. LaBelle went through the whole treasures report. We talked about budget calendar. You know, short-term impact of COVID nineteen is not too bad, but obviously, we don't hope that happens in the future. But we'll figure that out. We talked about a couple of resolutions, which I believe we're gonna talk about later. And, oh, Mr. Connelly shared about an optional computer insurance program that will be available to parents. Totally optional, and it's twenty-two bucks for each student per device per year, which will cover a lot of the things that the normal repairs don't cover. So that's a great thing, because I'm sure there's a lot of parents that know, if my kids were still there, I would be mad like crazy. We talked about our contractual services. The athletic trainer and S R O were kind of holding off. We're unsure because, you know, everyone's happening with athletics. We are gonna be talking with the local villages regarding our S R O agreement. So we'll be moving forward with those. Dr. Gay, of course, shared us, shared with us update on the state legislation, opening schools. And I think we all ended with that or begin. Mr. LaBelle also talked about the insurance renewal. And we did not get any increase in our insurance. Just in Austin here. And that was about it. Meeting adjourned at seven-ten. Next meeting is August seventeenth, right near the administration center. That's seven-four. Any questions? Yes?
What's the deductible for the Chromebooks?
Um, you know, they, he did go over.
Is he here?
Is he here? John, are you here?
John?
Hi, yeah, I'm here. Hello?
There was, oh, is he here?
John, count down now.
I'm here, yeah.
You? Okay, so John, John, what's the deductible for the Chromebooks? I know the Chromebook's twenty-two bucks, but is it like fifty bucks or two-hundred-and-fifty bucks or nothing?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm not sure on, on what the deductible is. It's, I think the first repair is free. Then there's an escalating charge for repairs.
What about the?
On, on the insurance, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what it is.
Okay, thanks.
I think he said the original one, it surprised me because there was a lot that was covered. But they said the first one is free. And then after that, I think he said it was fifty dollars to repair it. Also, it is screens, Chromebook screens, which tend to be worn. And then the third kind of day is paid.
You could only first talk about them Chromebooks. The idea was that you show up to your desk one and you would take your Chromebook in and out. You know, just to see if that's, which I thought was a really good idea. Like, oh, if this is gonna get you over, you know. You're sending kids here to same keyboard every day. Every fan, oh, yeah.
And then where we had it already, we didn't have it here.
You had distributed them all?
Not just that, we didn't have enough to serve you. We just had the building, classroom space, we wouldn't have. It's true.
There's one comment on all the construction. It just seems like there's always updating. Your principals and A Ds, and they're always showing off while it's going down at the school. So I feel like we're getting updated a couple of times a week. So it's pretty great.
Lot, lot of the things were.
They were very good. Kate, Kate did a great job. Kate really did. And the, and the one thing that she did mention about the insurance and the health insurance, it was great because John said who crossed came back with actually a pretty good size increase. Wear that. And then, you know, got another gun to that. I'm the cotton, and John went to them and she crossed key back and said, well, okay, what do we need to do? And worked out for us. So competition is a beautiful thing. So that's great. And one little plan design change that was a, you know. Okay, well, thank, thank you all for your reports. And we'll get back to that in August. All right, next, we have comments from our teachers association. Do we have with us tonight? I'm not sure. Anybody?
John just sent email earlier that says, I'm able to attend. I'm not sure if Kelly or anyone else. I had, John, for about an hour, I was just with the table.
Okay. All right.
Is there any for E S Ps out there?
We have E S P representative? All right. So we have no E S P rep either. Okay, then we will go on to.
We have one public comment.
Oh, which?
One public comment came.
There we go.
I'll read it, and then it's from Joanne. B U R Y J. So sorry, sorry that you're listening today. I feel sorry, but. Questions, we wrote, I read them. Question one, is it a district's plan to have a licensed medical professional on the team to lead a district director to establish student staff social distancing protocols and chair proper procedures for rooms, commons, cafeteria, bathroom, dispatching follow-up staffs, student families, data regarding COVID nineteen scenarios surrounding the campus community? The state government look to the science and utilize the medical data as their guiding source when safe physical returns to work, school, this is correct. Second, will the district allow an option for students to learn remotely slash online Zoom slash Skype classes due to concerns regarding health issues? Example, individuals who have immunocompromised or have underlying medical conditions, particularly not well-controlled. And third was if it return this, with return to school survey responds link to like eight, to our families, the link website is inactive. If you're obsessed to get, to receive information. So first two, all these questions, I'll go last one first. We are sending a survey out to, a letter out to our parents that ended this week or the next week with the random process getting translated into different languages at a station of time, because the survey itself is very long. There's a parent survey, a student survey, and I'll go in more detail later. We had it online, we put it online for about fifteen minutes today to see if we could click and that, that's exactly the message you went on there. But it wasn't active, it was just for us to make sure. So we explained to her already that that's not active. You know, to all the other questions, we addressed the transition team. It is underway, underway. We do have a license nurse at our primary schools, and we will, we will follow the guidelines from state I D V H C C. We are getting a letter to all students, staff, and families early next week, which goes to the survey to discuss as we come up with the final master plan. And however, I'll provide more detailed information regarding the plan and a letter at the end next week. That's only a public comment we have. Thank you.
And I know that in the state's plan now, it's a sixty-page document of things that we need to do, so.
And we are, and we'll talk about that a little later, but I'm gonna give an update. Okay, we are in person.
Okay, the changes have to change. All right, thank you. Thank you for the comment. And now we will move on to the curriculum spotlight. So Kim.
Tonight, our curriculum spotlight is by Dr. Dryer and Dr. Wheaton. They're gonna give an update to the program that they ran over the summer, microproduction program. And I think there's gonna be a, there'll be a presentation on the screen.
You guys are muted at this point.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Good evening, everybody. I'm delighted to be able to present this wonderful program to you. And let me just say ahead of time, if there's any technical difficulties, it's all Dr. Wheaton's fault. With that being said, I wanna, I wanna share with you a pretty exciting program that Dr. Wheaton and I got to co-facilitate the past quarter with our E S Ps. It's a micro credential program offered by Bloomboard. So I wanna start by telling you a little bit about Bloomboard. Bloomboard is an online program, started back in two thousand and ten. You can see they have a lot of schools and districts that are, that are using this, this, this virtual, this virtual site. It's backed by the Gates, Dell, and Jobs family foundations. And their main purpose is to shift kind of the traditional professional development to seat time to more competency-based certification. So it's a really interesting way to support staff in their career advancements that's very relative and rigorous. So you might be asking, what are micro credentials? So micro credentials are more like practice. It's, it's a little bit of learning and then applying, learning and applying, learning and applying. And it, it, it's very relevant and applicable to the work that you're doing in your current position. So unlike college courses, it's not, you know, reading for something that you're preparing to do in the future. It's unlike a lot of other professional development where you're going to an event and then you're coming back and applying it. It, it's taking what you're currently doing in your job and applying it to the knowledge that you're learning. This is, this is a map of where Bloomboard is currently, some of the states they're currently working with. And you could see some of the programs that they offer in regard to teacher induction, some specific endorsements. They were doing some work with C T E and then some work with leadership. So why did District Two Thirty choose to do this? Interestingly enough, Dr. Wheaton, Dr. Gonzalez, and I, last year, maybe even two years ago now that I think about it, we, we were part of a pilot program offered through I S U where we were invited to participate in an equity micro credential. So the three of us participated in this micro credential through Bloomboard. It, it was something they're trying to pilot in the state of Illinois. And they opened it up to anybody who was willing to do this. And, and the three of us said, let's, let's do this. And we did, and we found it to be in, in very, very rigorous. And what we really liked about it, we liked several things about it. One, it really encouraged us to collaborate with, with each other. It, it made us, it forced us to look at our district's data. And really, the projects that we were doing as part of this micro credential was, was all relevant to our district. So all the time that we spent on this micro credential was not something additional to, to our work. It was all part of what we do as leaders of the district. So we had some experience with the micro credentialing program and with Bloomboard, and we found it to be relevant and rigorous and, and very applicable to our positions. Since then, and the work that was led by Dr. Wheaton with the pipeline, the teacher pipeline, we, we began to look into partnering with Bloomboard to support the work of, of our pipeline. We were looking at the potential of adding some micro credentialing for our district leadership team, for our teacher leaders. So our teachers that maybe didn't wanna get a type seventy-five or teacher administration, administrative degrees, but wanted to be a teacher leader, there's, there's micro credentials in that area. We were also looking at mentoring, teacher mentors, new teacher, micro credentials, and then our P S, our P L C leaders. I wanna share with you examples of some of the clusters that they offer. Their P S E L aligned micro credentials are aligned to the professional standards for educational leaders. These are clusters which they offer. So on the right side are the P S L E competency clusters. You could see the color and then the micro credentials that fit underneath that. Working with Bloomboard, they allow you to kind of pick and choose your micro credentials and develop other categories as well. But these are just some of the pieces that they offer. Another, another area of competency, micro credentials that they offer are aligned to the Interstate New Teacher Assessment and Support Consortium. And an idea of what these look like are addressing learning differences. So under that category would be developing culturally responsive instruction, collaborating to meet the needs of diverse learners. And again, when, when you work individually with Bloomboard, they're responsive to your needs, and they will modify and individualize these micro credentialing programs. We had to put our work on hold because of the pandemic. So, so as we were working with, with Bloomboard and kind of identifying these, these four strands, COVID hit. So everything was put on hold because we, we had a focus on supporting our teachers in other ways. So what happened instead is we began to focus on our E S Ps. We had a group of our staff that needed different supports. So we worked with Bloomboard to identify a group of our E S Ps, and we handpicked a micro credential for them to, to work on. So this was the first of its kind that, that, that Bloomboard worked with. They had never run a micro credential for paraprofessionals before. What we had worked on was effective personal communication with an endorsement. I have to tell you, this, this group of E S Ps were spectacular. They were definitely trailblazers in this. And we, Julia and I had the pleasure of meeting with them weekly, actually, two times a week, facilitating conversations and supporting them through their journey. This is usually a semester work, and they were able to complete the majority of it within seven weeks. So it was, it was delightful, and, and the work that they did was exceptional. These are the three micro credentials that our E S Ps earned. Engaging families in the learning process, modeling effective communication, and building collaboratively relationships with peers. We targeted our special ed E S Ps, our E L E S Ps, some of our clerical E S Ps, our cashiers, and our dean's office E S Ps. Twenty-two E S Ps in total were, were, were our core group. So I'm gonna turn this over to Julia. She's gonna review what the micro credential program looked like and our success stories. Julia?
So I wanna take you on a brief tour of, of the Bloomboard platform. I'm very brief. Each participant in the program, all of the E S Ps that participated, as well as Kim and I as facilitators, had access to a Bloomboard platform and our dashboard. So Kim, if you wanna click on that, we'll take you through one of the credentials, which is the engaging families micro credential, just giving you a brief overview of what the platform, the platform looks like. So when a participant opens it up, they see this screen. This is actually Kim's account. And you can see the five steps that our E S Ps had to complete in order to earn the engaging families in the learning process micro credential. So Kim, if you scroll down a little bit, you can see that in the analyze portion, which is step one, our E S Ps had to generate a three-hundred-to-five-hundred-word narrative addressing the points that you see there that are bulleted. And then their narrative had to comply with a, with a very set and specific rubric. You can see the rubric down there. And Bloomboard does a really nice job with their rubrics because it told the E S Ps what their narrative had to do to demonstrate proficiency in the analysis phase. And then it also gives them the rubric for progressing or a rubric for not met. So they can see exactly what they're submitting in relation to the expectations. For each of the five areas, if you look on the far right-hand side, you can see resources for the analysis portion. So the first button, back, the background. The background gives our, gave our E S Ps resources and background information regarding family engagement that they could do to set the stage for their learning. And then the, the learn, the learn button, that's an example of the background information. The learn tab gives, gives them resources that, that extends their learning, and they're supposed to apply, apply these concepts in their analysis narrative. And then the collaborate button allows, it provides a platform for all of the participants to collaborate electronically, ask questions, share information, provide feedback and resources so that we're really all collaboratively learning together, both facilitators and participants. So going back to, going back to the main page, I'm not gonna take you through each one of them, but, but each one, design, implement, and evaluate, each has their own assignment and their own rubric. And the last step is to review their information and submit to the Bloomboard scorers. Kim and I did not score our E S P submissions. Those go to Bloomboard scorers, and then they provide feedback, formative feedback to our E S Ps on whether or not they demonstrated proficiency in that particular micro credential. On average, our E S Ps, it took them three submissions to pass the micro credential. A few of them did it in one submission. The most submissions we had, one person had six submissions. But honestly, as Kim said, I really applaud the tenacity and the commitment on the part of our E S Ps. This was an extremely rigorous program and a very, very challenging timeline, and they really rose to the challenge, and, and we couldn't be more proud. So that gives you an idea of the platform, and then they have the same platform for the other two micro credentials. This is a graphic representation of the participation of our E S Ps. You can see, obviously, our goal is to get them to green, which is earned. And you can see the majority of our, our E S Ps have earned all three micro credentials. So M C one, M C two, and M C three are the three micro credentials we talked about. The program is still open, and we've got a few people, a very few people that are still working on submissions, and Kim and I are facilitating with them. But honestly, this graph represents an achievement that far surpasses the goal that Kim and I had with this program. Bloomboard, we, just to let you know, District Two Thirty is now on the map with Bloomboard. We are the talk of Bloomboard across the nation in terms of what District Two Thirty was able to do with this program. And we're blazing a trail for them, and it's becoming a really good and strong partnership. Bloomboard surveyed our, the participants, the E S Ps that participated. On a scale of one to five, you can see how they rated the five areas that they were surveyed on. Five being the most positive and, and one being the most concerning. You can see that the highest score was appropriate support from both District Two Thirty and Bloomboard. Incentives for participation, they asked that question because some districts are providing some financial incentives for, for staff to participate. Our staff did that all on their own just for the professional growth opportunity. So that, that score, it was a three-point-four-seven. Just some staff testimonials, I'm not gonna read these all to you, but just a, you know, a key, a few that we just wanted to highlight. These were all direct quotes provided to, by our E S Ps in terms of their participation in the program. This one, I have also learned that the interactions that I thought were meaningless carry a lot of power and importance for our families. This is extremely empowering exercise and activity for our E S Ps and, and honestly, for Kim and I. In fact, I think Kim and I might have, might have learned more because it was just, it was so worthwhile for us to actually engage with this group. It was, it was, it was very informative. Finding any small way to get to families engaged is crucial for successful students. And they learned that family engagement is not just one-way communication. It's not just sending things out and hope people read it. It was, it's actually engaging families in the student's learning process, which was invaluable for them. It allowed me to self-reflect on my verbal and nonverbal communication skills and how it affects everyone around me, students, parents, peers, and family. And then, starting now and carrying into next year, I plan to fully harness the momentum and confidence I've gained in my time with Bloomboard to create more meaningful interactions with the families that contact me. I've gained a great deal of knowledge and a sense of self-confidence that will definitely improve my job performance. The whole point of this program, and Kim alluded to it in the, in the introduction, is, is to generate skills and knowledge that are applicable and are continually growing. This is far different than the, the traditional sit and get where I take notes and I may or may not actually apply them when I get back to my job. This is actual learning and knowledge and skills that you apply into your professional setting. As far as open communication, I plan to work on building trusting relationships with peers so that I can communicate with them in a safe, nonjudgmental atmosphere. The, the recognition, public relations, and pride that our E S Ps and, and Kim and I as well felt at the successful completion of this program was, was just phenomenal. This is an email that was sent to Kim and, and myself from one of our dean's aides at Andrew. And the, the whole purpose of the email to us was just to, to show how, how proud he was of the three badges that he earned from Bloomboard. And you can see the badges on his signature line that will be there in perpetuity. And not only is it public recognition of, of Patrick. And not only is it public recognition of, of Patrick and his accomplishment, something that he's very, he's very proud of, but it also is, it is a public relations communication tool for the district to let our community know that we are committed to professional development and that our employees are, are, maintain high skills, high knowledge and, and high success. I want to introduce you to Laura McIntyre. Laura is an academic mentor at StAG and this is her testimonial of her participation in the Bloomboard program.
Hi, Kim and Julia asked me to make a video in regards to our Bloomboard micro credential. And I just wanted to say that as an aide, the very first module about communicating with parents was eye-opening for many of us. It took a look at our past practices and actually with remote learning, made us think about ways to better communicate with parents the next time around. I also liked the other ones as well. The, this one was considerably harder for me. It wasn't asking me for examples, it was a little more specific, but that was okay. And I just wanted to say how Julia and Kim were so great at making sure that we never gave up and that they were there to support us. And that was really essential for, I think, many of us to finish and successfully finish this micro credential. I would think about doing another one again. But I appreciate you giving us all the opportunity to show that we are essential as far as getting some PDs done. And this is something I think all aides should definitely look into doing. We all need to work on our communications skills, especially during remote learning. Thanks again. Have a good one.
So thanks to Laura for providing us with that feedback. This was a great opportunity for us. It wasn't in our, our original plan. We, we honestly took advantage of the, the time that we had in remote learning and we stretched ourselves and moved into our, the realm of our support staff, which was highly, highly successful. Couldn't be more proud of the work that they did. Next steps, we'd like to expand the rigor and relevance of our in-district PD through the use of Bloomboard. In part, we would like to explore strategic opportunities in social emotional learning and blended learning. We'd like to move into creating viable and flexible asynchronous PD programs, which are a combination of both in-person and independent work with an application component. Apply embedded learning that benefits the, our District 230 instruction. And after a conversation with our leadership team, we really believe Bloomboard can help support as a resource, our transition planning and returning to school. And then also continuing to grow our trailblazing partnership with Bloomboard, Inc. as they expand what they're doing both in Illinois. They're working currently with the Illinois State Board of Education and other states across, across the country. So that's just a snapshot of, of our work this spring in seven weeks during the months of April and May. Questions that you might have?
Are these only for me and Steve, right?
The, the seven-week program was only for support staff. However, the application, the Bloomboard application actually applies to support staff, administration and teachers.
Can anybody take a class at any time or are there specific times if they're available?
Go ahead, Cam.
So, so there, the, once we partner with, it's, it's a contract-based program with Bloomboard. So we would have to, we would have to develop the micro credential that we would want and then have people sign up for that. And then they would have a semester to, to complete that. It's an asynchronous opportunity that they would do on their own, but we would expect that to be finished within a semester time or whatever timeframe we put on that.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, it sounds like a very interesting program, so we'll have other things down the line for that. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we will get to the business portion. And John, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me all right?
Yes. So the first item is the resolution to abate the working cash.
Correct. Yeah, this is the last step in our 2020 bond issue. And with this one resolution and certification, we'd be moving funds from working cash to O and M and then to capital projects to take care of the, the projects we're going to be doing over the next several years.
Okay, can we get a motion please?
I think that the school board authorized the school treasurer to permanently abate $22,902.50 from working cash to operations and maintenance and then transfer to the capital project.
Second, the motion made by Walton, seconded by Member O'Sullivan to abate the working cash to O and M and then to capital projects. Do we have any comments or questions? All right, let us vote.
Member O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Member Murphy Peterson?
Yes.
Member Hardick?
Yes.
Member O'Connor?
Yes.
Member Dalton?
Yes.
Member Grazias?
Yes.
Member Sarah Torey?
Yes, the motion passes. Okay, the next item is the Sandberg varsity baseball turf site bid.
You notice there'll be two things, there's the turf.
Turf. No, sir.
There's the, the.
So John, John, is that you or is it, I understand?
We've got Bob Hughes with us tonight. He had a family emergency today, so Bob is going to introduce that. But yeah, there's two parts to this. The preparation and then the installation, two, two separate bids and Bob's going to introduce those now.
Hello, everybody. Can you guys hear me? Okay. As John mentioned, there's actually two parts to this bid. The first one is the actual site work for the bid to prepare the field to have the actual turf installed. We sent out, sent the bid to seven contractors, we received six bids. The bids range from a low of $1,32,441 to a high of $1,278,885. The lowest bidder is a company called Hoppies Landscaping. They're from Lockport, Illinois. Their bid was for the $1,32,441. We, the architects and myself, we contacted several of their references and they all gave them, spoke very highly of them. So we'd like to recommend that the first part of the Sandberg varsity baseball turf project be awarded to Hoppies Landscaping in Lockport, Illinois.
Okay, so there will be two separate motions. We'll do this first motion. So the school board award the 2020 Sandberg varsity baseball turf site where the Hoppies Landscaping in Lockport,
Second.
A motion made by Member O'Sullivan, seconded by Member Murphy Peterson to accept the bid from Hoppies with the turf site work. Any comments or questions?
They are, they're going to be following prevailing wages, is that correct?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are. And they're actually a union contractor.
Bob, as part of their references, have they done similar projects?
Yes, in fact, they did all four stadiums, football stadiums for District 228 and 2018. And they were able to do all four in one summer. So they did a pretty good job at it and they speak very highly of them.
The other thing that, which we discussed at the building and finance meeting is that the work that they are going to do would have had, had been done at Sandberg, regardless of whether we turf the field or with grass for the field. This was the, the under, underneath the field work that has to be done regardless. So this would not, it's not an issue of, oh, we have to do it for turf, but not for grass. This has to be done no matter what. So, okay, then let's call it to a vote, please.
Member O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Member Murphy Peterson?
Yes.
Member Hardick?
Yes.
Member O'Connor?
Yes.
Member Dalton?
Yes.
Member Grazias?
Yes.
Member Sarah Torey?
Yes, the motion passes. Okay, Bob, now we'll go on the actual turf.
Okay, this is the second part of the bid package. And this particular bid package is for the actual installation of the synthetic turf and its infill and, you know, logos and so on and so forth. This particular package, we sent out three bit, three different bids to three different turf manufacturers and we received bids from all three. The bids range from a low of $495,178 to a high of $610,154. Now, both of these numbers that I'm giving you include the alternates number one and number two. Alternate number one was for the installation of school logos on the turf. And alternate number two was for using a special organic infill, which reduces the temperature of the turf surface. The lowest bidder was a company called Shaw Sports Turf Bid. Shaw is a huge corporation that in addition to making synthetic turf, makes carpeting that's for sale throughout the world. In fact, we did an extensive review on this bid because they were substantially lower than the other two bidders. We met with the bidder on several different occasions. We made sure that all the items in our bid package are included and he assured us that they were. And he told us that the reason his bid was much slower than everybody else is that they're really actively trying to get into this market. And so they're, we're happy to recommend them. One of the, one of the things that they're doing in addition to our bid is they're going to give us several large, they're like huge bags of additional fill material that we can use when the material gets disrupted or moved out or displaced. And the whole purpose of this is it actually makes the, the actual playing surface cooler because of the organic infill that's installed. So we're recommending that the school board award the bid to Shaw's, Shaw Sports Turf from Calhoun, Georgia in the amount of $495,178.
Can I have a motion please?
And we'll get the school board award the 2020 Sandberg baseball turf material installation bid to Shaw Sports Turf from Calhoun, Georgia in the amount of $495,178.
Second, motion made by Member Murphy Peterson, seconded by Member Hardick to approve the bid from Shaw for the turf installation project. Comments or questions?
Yeah, the alternate to reduce the temperature by 40 degrees is $12,798. Is that correct?
Yes.
I just wondered, you know, I've been out there and it's always cold. I agree with your temperature reduction.
Well, the purpose is for during the summer, for games during the summer. It's basically helps to counteract the heat from the, how the sun heats the surface of the turf up. That's the.
I think that's summer baseball, I think. That's, those 10 years ago, whatever, you know, and we're worried about the heat. And now since 10 years ago, it's new, new pallets and keep it colder. Because, you know, the heat.
I'm going to say in the baseball season, it's always cold.
Right. I didn't have to worry about it in the summer. It was summer. I was saying about fall too, to be out. Like P E. And being a, there, being a turf is going to be used once a month. You know, we can have other practices out there, gangs, a lot there, on the place to go out.
And is the temperature reduction up too or is it always like 35, 40 degrees?
It's, it's up to 35 to 40 degrees.
Just real quick before we vote, just two things to remember. Number one is that the bid of this, of the whole project was a million eight. So we're underneath that bid by about $300,000. And the second thing is when we first talked about this project, if we put in grass, it was going to be about $350,000. So as we know from the football field, we save a lot of money on maintenance with the turf. So we're actually coming out ahead in this.
I don't think we're using. Or is it intended for which as well as the whole of the.
Yeah, right.
Even not a million news, it's a turf field for, it's a tenant for. Absolutely.
I think great, great work.
And we're now ahead.
Okay, Lisa, let's vote.
Can I, I can just.
I'm sorry.
So is there, are they headquartered in Georgia? Do they have dental lines throughout the country? Or will the workers be coming from Georgia?
Well, they're, they, they use local installers and the installer is going to be from the Illinois area.
Okay, all right, Lisa, let's vote.
Member O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Member Murphy Peterson?
Yes.
Member Hardick?
Yes.
Member O'Connor?
Yes.
Member Dalton?
Yes.
Member Grazias?
Yes.
Member Sarah Torey?
Yes, the motion passes. John, you have your new baseball field.
Thank you, everybody, very much. This is going to be an outstanding thing for Sandberg and the community as well. So thank you so much.
It's going to be more summer.
Bob, John and Dave Mac here, thank you for all your work on that. Okay, so next is the easement, Payless Hills, which I know was talked about a couple of years ago and now I guess it's finally going to happen. John?
Sure, yeah. Bob also was involved with this, but this was, this was back, we, we did a letter of support for this. I believe it was back in February of 2019. And basically they're widening the intersection, they're lengthening turn. You know, where cars queue up to turn from Roberts Road going north to turn left. So it's, it's going to be an improvement all around. I believe traffic traveling east is going to have a better view of oncoming traffic. There's been some accidents there related to visibility and the ability to see oncoming cars as they're trying to turn left. So a lot, a lot of improvements. It took them this long to get, you know, these easements in place with the four corners. We get all the property owners on board, but I think everyone's going to be real happy with, with the improvements. And it's, it's going to be cosmetically better looking as well as they're planning on putting some signage in on the corners and some decorative, you know, sidewalks and things similar to what Orland has done with, with their new intersections.
Hopefully this won't take as long as LaGrange.
I hope we won't be talking about this for three years or whatever, so.
We may want to bring a decade acre out of retirement. I want the school board to approve the permanent easement agreement with the city of Payless Hills. Motion made by Member O'Sullivan, seconded by Member Grazias to approve the easement with the city of Payless Hills. Any comments or questions?
I do have a question about the signage that they're proposing on the corner. Is that going to allow enough room for StAG signage or is it planned for the situation?
I had a talk with the StAG, tall signs, I think. If smaller one, if it's that, it's going to be nicer now. We're going to work with them to, so that wouldn't, when we're agreeing, we love it. But we may lose it. We may lose some of that. And so they're going to work with us to put some certain signs on there for the city of StAG. Tall electronic one, that'd be.
I just want to make sure that we're giving the easements away that we don't have the issue we get with the other sign, with the other village.
Correct. Bob and John, that's correct, right? They said they work with us on that sign?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Very good points.
Are they going to keep the red light camera?
Yeah, I'm sorry, John or Bob, you know if they're going to keep the red light? The red light camera and.
Oh, I, I don't know if that was discussed. Did you hear, Bob?
No, we didn't discuss the red light cameras at all.
I think that's paying for the sign.
Anything else? I'm going to keep that in mind now. So, state championship. Lisa, let's vote.
Member O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Member Murphy Peterson?
Yes.
Member Hardick?
Yes.
Member O'Connor?
Yes.
Member Dalton?
Yes.
Member Grazias?
Yes.
Member Sarah Torey?
Yes, motion passes. Okay. Okay, uh, John or Bob on the maintenance?
Yeah, I, uh, yeah, Dave prepared a, a pretty comprehensive memo. The, this is year two of a three-year agreement with A B M. They've done a tremendous job, uh, getting us through this COVID-nineteen, uh, situation, uh, doing additional cleaning, disinfecting, helping us, um, in, in, in a number of different ways. And, you know, in some aspects, they're on the front lines there with, uh, you know, when it comes to the germs that are coming in and out of our buildings. So we, we really appreciate what they've been doing. And, uh, this again is the second year of a three-year agreement. It was a negotiated, uh, agreement. And, um, and next year will be a negotiated one as well, um, for, for the final rate paid. But, uh, this represents a total increase for the year of about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. It includes new entrance mats. There was a situation, uh, I think last year related to, um, a change in their health insurance where, where some of the maintenance workers, um, were going to resign and find a, a different, uh, situation because of, because of that. And so you do see a, a surcharge on there for a increase, a health insurance increase where we're subsidizing what, uh, what's being paid for that so that we could maintain those maintenance workers. It's a six sixty, forty split that we agreed upon, um, a while back on that. So, uh, that's continuing. But, um, beyond that, it's, uh, pretty straightforward.
It's like this reiterating, they did an amazing job with their multiple graduations that we had at three schools. They sat up and sat down, sat ups and downs, you know, I think Sandberg hit three in a row. They worked very well with, I think the principals would attest, uh, how well they worked with the building to assist, uh, staff and students in any fashion. Especially here, last couple months.
And create a motion, please.
I would give the school board a second proposed annual increase with A B M industry groups LLC is presented for a cost plus cap amount per fiscal year twenty-one of six million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty.
Second. A motion made by Member Murphy Peterson, second by Member Brassius to approve the second year of the A B M contract. Comments or questions? Okay, just, uh, two things. One is the, the max is what we're approving, and we rarely ever hit the max. So that is, uh, remember that. And then, you know, it is Dr. Gay, sir, I think we all agree, and the number of years we've now had this contract with them. I think that great relationship, they've done a wonderful job, so.
Apparently, yeah, apparently, we got hired, and we've done a great job.
Okay, Lisa, let's vote.
Member O'Sullivan?
Yes.
Member Murphy Peterson?
Yes.
Member Harding?
Yes.
Member O'Connor?
Yes.
Member Dalton?
Yes.
Member Brassius?
Yes.
Member Sarah Torrey?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay, Robert, summer projects update?
Yeah, I'm happy, um, okay, hello again. One thing that's, that's really going to town is the field turf installation on the stadiums. They have all the turf down at Stag and they have almost all the turf down at Sandberg. This, they, they've been working seven days a week, weather permitting. And they're gonna start working on installing the logos and the numbers and the infill, and they'll be done with those before you know it. Andrew, they've just started removing the turf surface, uh, the actual turf. So they, the electrical work can take place on that. And then they've also, at all three stadiums, they've removed the track surfaces, the rubber track. And then at Sandberg, they had to take the asphalt sub base up too because the rubber track was adhered so well to the asphalt that we couldn't get it up without taking the asphalt too. So once the track, uh, excuse me, once all the field turf is installed, then they're gonna come back in and install the, the track surfaces. And, and in Sandberg's case, the asphalt and the track surfaces. Uh, Sandberg's East Gym windows are completed. They completed them today. Next week, they have to do some final caulking and that project will be done. The L E D lighting retrofit, which is one of the biggest projects, which affects, you know, most of the schools, areas of the schools. That's well underway. They've reinstalled all the fixtures that they have up to this point, and then the new, more fixtures are coming in weekly through the end of July. We should have them all by the last week in July, and they're, they're working on installing them. And, and if they're not, depending upon when school starts, um, if they have to, we'll still have lights in the classrooms, but they'll be working on second shift to, uh, finish the L E D project. That, that's all dependent upon when the school actually starts again. The roofing phase one project, that's for, uh, putting reinforced liquid membrane on all of the two thousand and one additions. That's the new additions. Stag is, uh, gonna be completed by next Wednesday. They've already started the repairs on Andrew's roof prior to putting the membrane on. And the repairs will be, uh, continue to make the repairs, continue to make repairs next week. And then they're planning on starting on the repairs at, uh, Sandberg on July first. During the month of May, they started early, but they were only able to work eight days because of the rain. They kept getting rained out and, uh, the problem with getting rained out is the next day when it doesn't rain, they have to clean the roof off completely to start working on them again. So the other big project that we have going on is the security cameras. All of the, uh, interior cameras have been installed at Stag. The exterior cameras are being installed as we speak. They've also installed about, uh, seventy-five percent of Sandberg's interior cameras, and they started working on those exterior cameras too. And then Andrew, uh, once they're almost complete at Sandberg, they're gonna move to Andrew and install the cameras at Andrew. That work's still on schedule to be finished by August first. The alteration project at all three schools, which involves, um, classrooms at Stag, the copy room at Stag, the I T office at Stag, a new press box for Stag's varsity baseball field and varsity softball field. And then it also includes, uh, new softball dugouts and a press box for the varsity softball field at Sandberg. All these are, are on schedule, and everything's going pretty well with those two. And they're, we're on line to be done with the interior definitely by August first and the exterior probably by August fifteenth, with the dugouts and so forth. The last big project that we have going on is Stag's pool filter replacement. They've already demo, demolished the existing filter, and, uh, we received the, the final I D P H permit, uh, let's see, Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday. So that work's gonna continue too, uh, so they can get the filter installed and be ready for the upcoming swimming season. Other than that, we have a bunch of, uh, little minimal projects that, uh, routine maintenance and stuff that's going on. But everything is in pretty good shape this summer. I'm happy to report.
Any questions for Bob? Bob, how are we doing with that, uh, safety audit that was, uh, one, two years ago? I mean, I know we knocked a whole out, a whole bunch of stuff out really early. Are we complete with that or there's some other projects still outstanding?
Well, the last, uh, recommendation was actually, uh, the installation of more, uh, security cameras, which is in process right now. And when that's done, uh, we're virtually complete with the whole recommendations, with every single recommendation they made.
That was two summers ago, right?
Yes, yes.
What's our next one? Couple more years?
Well, actually, that's up to us. I mean, depending upon, um, I would say probably another, a couple of years, we, we do one. And, and it depends, you know, what's happening in schools and, and, uh, you know, what other types of things we need to look at. And, and at this place, at this point in time, who knows what we're have to be looking for in the next couple of years?
Thanks, boss.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Bob. It's good to hear your voice. All right, then next we will go to Dr. Gay.
Yes, there's a, um, so first of all, we follow the session, foundation of data, so I want to give a transition plan, a brief transition plan update. And I'm really proud of the work that's been going on. I mean, in my weeks, you've seen that, that huge plan, and it's, it's a lot of work. But I'd like to take this opportunity to share an update of our work and making plans with transition back to school in the fall, or whatever form that may be. Information I'm sharing now will be shared with students, families, staff, or call, email, text, website, and mobile app by Monday. We are impressed with having the communication translate the languages spoken by most of the families, the English at home. But I'm very, kind of very proud of the work of the committees, that they've, uh, they've been working very, very hard over the past few weeks. An oversight committee including our three secret chiefs, our three principals committee has coordinated the work of thirteen separate committees to make recommendations on how to best serve our students and staff in the safest and most effective structural setting in the fall. Our committees are focused on the educational, social, emotional, and operational components of opening the twenty-one, the twenty-twenty-one school year. Those committees include administrators and representatives of each of our three employee units, teachers, to support staff and our employees. For this to get dealt with, we need input from all agencies to see how we're working in their, their specific areas. You know, we, I must say, I say, that's how it's gonna work in the kitchen, not be a cook. But the cooking hall is how it's working in the kitchen, you know? So, and E S Ps, and how they work, the guidance officer, the Dean's office, you know? So we got a lot of, a lot of bodies of department. But I want to make it clear, the district, this following will continue to follow the Illinois State Board of Education, Centers for Disease Control, Illinois Department of Health, and the Illinois High School Association, and the guidance deck now. We will follow those guidelines and make sure we're, no one just came out of gym just two days ago, June twenty-third, a sixty-five page report. And sure, it's, I already shaking their head as well, and, and how to handle some of this. On Tuesday, as I said, coming under J P F's here, the Illinois State Board of Education released a detailed guidance that assists our plan, which we are, uh, going through. Currently, guidance is for schools to just prepare for three potential scenarios, fully onsite, fully remote, and blend in slash remote learning. A blended model would have groups of students on campus at different times, along with online instruction. Exactly what would it look like is part of the planning discussions that we are in the way. But one thing to remember, depending on the COVID-nineteen situation, it is possible they would move between the both scenarios. In other words, we can start onsite, have to go blended, start remote, go blended, go onsite. It would have to be, it's gonna be fluid, uh, as you've seen possibly through some states, numbers will change and all that. So we have to plan for three because that's not three, this is three, plan for three in case we have to go through different forms. Again, as evident through the last few months of twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-two school year, we remain aware of the potential new information and development plans and flexibility in it. So we need input. The district economy agencies, guidelines, and any representation from each of our unions and the planning committees, we're studying surveys, students, families, staff, for the next week. Surveys are public center. Experiences during the last school year, remote learning, how was it? Always good, but it was bad, tell us that word. What we need to consider about safety, returning onsite learning with the, with the timelines. So when the time comes, whether there's some safety concerns parents may have. Overall, how we can best meet the education, the social, emotional needs of our students, our families, and our staff. We're currently processing surveys and letters translated in Polish, Arabic, and Spanish, where we seek the widest range of families and student foot. And we're gonna send this out, because that are out to our local, um, churches and messes and, and leaders and different people. So they can get it on their websites and talk to their people. We want to get it out as much as possible, so people can get this survey going out. So whenever it is, we have schools that have, it's called the stereo alliances, they're gonna get the stereo alliances. They're like the website officials, have people who maybe also get, you know, if they see that a T two or E V L rash, or if they get, other people maybe they'll, oh. We need their input. School calendar, a lot of conversation about the school calendar. At this time, the security is planned opening on the previous published start date, August fourteenth, pressure on August seventeenth for our students. But as planning continues, there are amendments to the calendar we need to take place. We all know that November third is now a national holiday. So we can stay holidays, or we can have anything on November third. Some schools, we, we've had school, I mentioned, uh, some schools have institute days because their school was used maybe in the polling place. We're not allowed institute day from all thirty, not that thirty, twenty, thirty, the one, on that day. It's a one day, it's a one year holiday, not like, right? But that being said, remember we passed the calendar already, it had November third as a school day, we have a ready. So as we go through planning, we'll see if the calendar has to be amended or not. But as I said again, as COVID-nineteen circumstances continue to evolve, we, we remain flexible for the situation to continue. Our teams are working to design the safety educational corporate experiences for students and staff. This two thirty is committed, designing, and sharing a plan that is best for our students and staff and meets the state and other agency partners. This summer, we are founding guidance on the same agencies to safely implement drivers' education, which you guys have all seen. Athletics and activities from H S A, which is going, maybe going against stage two as state moves to phase four. I, I H S A stages with state or base. But the stage two of H S A is right now, and I think the H N is waiting for that. Okay. And our, our A Ds are already, our A Ds are already, we're gonna plan. As plans are made, we'll continue to communicate with the community. Our next schedule of communication, we had what, after this week, every two weeks, or something like that, sooner or later, we're getting things out to our parents. Natural communication will be at this time. As recent as today, um, that week and myself, we're having a webinar hosted by H L R regarding the new guidelines that were just released in twenty-three, June twenty-third. We continue to look at all the data from federal, state guidelines, and, and it's just amazing. But we will create the best possible, safest plan for our students, staff, and parents, and create it at home. Also part of our transition plan for back to school, however that may look, we continue to focus on ensuring all voices are heard and respected throughout the district. And proud, as the building's continued to focus on ensuring all students and staff and community members feel welcome and celebrated in our building. As was outlined in communications, the district, the district and schools sent out to families, much work has been taking place and will continue to be focused as we transition back to school. This is an important conversation taking place in district duty as well as across the country. And truly appreciative of the support we have received from the school board, administration, union representatives, and planning process. And forward hearing input from our students, our families, our staff over the next couple of weeks. However, the compassion, flexibility, and passion for education shown by our community is really to be commended. And we continue to be teaching through the project, we did a great job all the way into the year. Summer school's going very well, I hope, ended. I don't, I'm not my model, I think, today, 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 first session ended, right? First session of summer school ended today, I think, that. Second, nothing next week because we're in Halloween, it starts again at six.